Good evening and welcome to the Facilities Usage and Planning Subcommittee Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. We are at the George Rahm Little Theater at Brockton High School and we are a few minutes late. We had a previous Subcommittee that just ended, so it is 6:36 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. All right, let's establish a quorum. Mrs. Sullivan, Mr. Vega, Ms. Oliver, Vice Chair Rodriguez, Mr. Sullivan, and the Superintendent, Dr. Tahiliyanis here, and I am also present, Chair. So we do have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is discussion, state of readiness of our buildings, schools, and programs. So I know we had a lot of building movement that happened, so we're looking for an update as to where we are with all our buildings, school, our teachers and our staff. Some of them are already back, and we're going to be starting on Tuesday if those haven't already gotten back. So who will be presenting?
I respectfully request that we invite Dr. Cobb.
Oh, Dr. Cobb, if you can present.
Good evening. So I've walked through the building several times, especially the buildings where we have projects ongoing. We're ready, schools are ready to open. For the most part, the schools that do not have projects, the routine maintenance and waxing and furniture and stuff, it's completed. We'll be ready to open the buildings.
So all our buildings with the movement have all been, they're ready to open?
That's correct. All the moves are completed, all the buildings are ready to open. We're doing some touch-up painting in some of the buildings, the Goddard and Huntington Building. And we still have, you know, some of the phone systems are just about up and running, but there'll be things that we complete as the school year opens, but we'll be ready to open.
Okay, because the last meeting we had, I know we were waiting on telephones, and I see Mr. Dan Vigent in the audience. So if, Mr. Vigent, if you want to just join us, I just want, IT is all set, computers are all set, our staff, a lot of them are reaching out to us, wondering, you know, where we are, are we all done? So I want to just make sure computers, phone lines, everything's all set, there's nothing that we're waiting on, they can just come back and they can get everything going. If you can just introduce yourself for the record and then if you want to give us an update.
Good evening, everybody. Dan Vigent, the Senior Tech Director for the Brockton Public School System, and I'm happy to answer any questions. So the first question was, is everything all set? Everything is not 100% all set. The moves themselves, so there was four major moves. There was the Goddard Building, the Huntington Building, and the Payne Building, two of which required major renovations. When you're dealing with renovations, as Mr. Vega would probably attest, IT is always the last one in. So you get your carpenters, your electricians, your painters, then IT. So at the tail end, we do always seem like we're kind of running behind schedule almost, but we're not. But most of the moves, and I'll just go through each one because I brought notes.
Thank you.
The Goddard School, okay, is hosting the community schools. They are 99% moved in. Now, you'll never see 100% for me, because with IT, there never is 100%, it just doesn't exist in IT. 99% is 100% for most people. So it's, they're 99%. The Goddard also hosts the ALC, the Adult Learning, and they're 95% done with their moves. And let me, let me back this up a little bit, there's a caveat. So their moves are physically moving people, computers, printers, the technology, the equipment. With the renovations, it was decided that we were going to tear everything off the walls and put new interactive flat panels on, okay? That part is still ongoing, and I'm going to get to the percentages of completion for that. But people physically moving is what we're talking about right now. So community schools, 99%, 100% moved. ALC, 95% moved. And when I say 95%, and I have my notes, I gave it to Tracy, and she could throw it up on the screen if you wanted to.
Sure, Tracy, if you're able to do that. Perfect.
That helps us.
Might have to zoom in a little bit, but, so, because I want to explain what I mean by 95%, okay? So 95%, if you look at the ALC, which is the third bullet, okay, there's the three bullets at the end. One is the main office needs their printer copier moved, that'll be done by the end of the week, EOW. The second, the next bullet is waiting on facilities, are they okay to move the student laptop cart? Again, that's not a big deal, we're just waiting on some space, that'll be done by the end of the week. And the third one is Room 108 needs their printer installed. So there's three outstanding items for that move to get them to 100%. The Huntington, we moved my department to the Huntington. We're at 85%. We're fully operational. We're using some temp desks until some cubicles are built, basically. That's what gives us most of that 85%. And we're still redoing our storage inventory. The tech department has lots of inventory, and we're very meticulous about how we store it, how we catalog it. We get audited every year with the city, we pass with line colors. The Huntington hosts the Promise. They're 85% moved, which means we need to install four more printers, done by the end of the week. And by end of the week, my staff is telling, I took notes of walking the schools, talking to my staff, they're telling me tomorrow or Thursday, I put end of the week because I don't want to make any promises that I can't keep, but before school starts, before the weekend, this will all be done. We have to move a couple of student laptop carts, and then there's a POS, a point-of-sale system for the Food Services Department that we're working with, Director Tom Burke with, and that'll be done by the end of the week as well. So if you look at the second bullet, basically from each one, end-of-the-week status, they're all expected to be 99%, 99%. My department, again, does a little bit to do, but we're fully functional. That's why end of the week will be 95%, but it won't affect our operation. Huntington hosts the Brockton Virtual Learning Academy. They're 85% moved. We're looking at three more printers to be set up, two more PCs to be set up, and then there was a request for a larger monitor, and that's under approval status right now. And just for context, so these are onesies-twosies, I also have 600 open work orders for the rest of the district. So these onesies-twosies get done in literally a matter of minutes, if not maybe an hour or two. There's, in the context of what we do for the whole district, this is, I don't want to say it's nothing, because I don't want to dismiss it, but it's very light. And I have no doubt that it'll be done by the end of the week. The next page, we moved the bilingual to, into the Central Administration Office, the Crosby Building, the lower office level, 95% complete, end of the week, it'll be 100%, 99%. We just had to add a couple of printers to their desktops. The Payne Building hosts the Champion School. They're 75% complete. This was my only yellow flag that I had during my walkthroughs. They're 75% complete because they recently requested a few additional things that we're going to accommodate. We have the stock, we have the inventory, we've got them in the queue. We expect all of that to also be done by the end of the week. This one in particular, I'll be paying a lot of attention to at the end of the week to make sure it's done. And then Summer Street hosts therapeutic day school, 95% complete. Student ID machine needs to be set up. We need to relocate the point-of-sale system for the food services. And just, we're waiting on the principal to tell us where exactly they want that point-of-sale system. Again, they're really, they're just about complete. I mean, if I wanted to be a little cavalier, I'd say they're all pretty much done. These are, these fall in line with what we're doing with the rest of the schools that didn't even have moves. These are just people coming back and want this moved over here or whatever. So that's the moves. Then there's the interactive flat panel project. The Huntington is receiving 21 of them. They are being installed tomorrow and Thursday, and the vendor assures me they'll be done by the end of the week. Basically, with the new panels we're putting in, it's as simple as hanging a TV. They're done a lot quicker than things that are done in the past with projectors and running wires and electric and everything else. They just hang the TV. So they could do 20, they could do 20 panels in a day, probably. So I don't have any doubt about that one as well. The Goddard, they are receiving 12 interactive flat panels, six of them have already been installed. The other six will be installed tomorrow or Thursday. The Champion, again, this, so the Champion was a late order. It was decided after July 1st, so we put the order in. We're waiting on the equipment. The nice thing was with the Champion, which is the Payne Building, it was retrofitted with Brightlink interactive projectors, which is the predecessor to the interactive flat panels. So they're very highly functional, still running, they perform well, actually. Brightlinks, we've left them in there. So the teachers will still have an interactive device in the classroom. In a few weeks, we'll come back, we'll swap those all out with the interactive flat panels, just because that's the wave of the future, and that's what we're putting on the schools. We want to be consistent when teachers move room to room. So there's no impact on the classroom. And then there was three installs from the Goddard, but with all the moves, we ended up not needing them, so we have three coming in. Location to be determined. I will guarantee in the next two days, I will get a call from somebody saying their projector broke or their Brightlink, we'll use them right up, they're not going to stay in storage very long. So that, those are the moves.
Thank you. So, thank you for itemizing each location for us. That helps us understand, because things aren't completely done. So we, they should be done within the next week or two.
Yes.
Within the next week or two, give or take, sometimes you run into a little bit of a delay here and there. But our phones, so do we know, Dr. Cobb, if Mr. Campbell, Joe Campbell, I know the last update we had before IT is done is, we want to make sure our phone extensions, our phones were working, our computers were all set. So we had IT and we had, they mentioned, Mr. Vigent and Mr. Campbell, we're going to report on those two, because Mr. Thompson reported on the actual facilities. So...
I'm not privy to the phones.
You're all set as far as the computers. As far as IT, do any of the members have any questions or comments? Vice Chair, did you have a question or comment? Okay, Mr. Vega, then Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Let me own the fact that anytime I talk to Mr. Vigent, it's going to be slightly biased. We do similar work, he does it at a much larger scale than I do. So, so looking at these moves and seeing, you know, that anything that isn't done is scheduled for end of week is pretty impressive, especially given that in some cases, the building wasn't really designed for the level of technology that's in it now. So, so that's really impressive. So, I mean, given that, I just want a better understanding of like, so with these moves, it's been a very busy summer in terms of building moves, like, what does the project management look like? I mean, like, are you meeting regularly with the Ken Thompsons of the world, you know, like, what does that look like? How do you coordinate efforts?
Sure. So, again, context is probably pretty important. I've been here 20 years. We've done more moves in the last four than the first 15, or 16 of my 20 years. So there's been a lot of moves each summer, it seems. That said, there takes a lot of coordination with the Facilities Department to make this work, because if not, we'd be tripping all over ourselves. Like I said, there's a lot of tradesmen or tradespeople in these buildings with carpenters and painters, and you can't put one thing before the other thing. There's a lot of coordination. We're really, we're really good at it, I'm not trying to brag. The Facilities Department is excellent to work with. If they weren't, neither department could pull off what we do. If I was back in the private sector, I would literally have a subdivision tech department just for the amount of moves we do every year. That's, it's a lot. Does that, does that answer the question?
And following that up, so it sounds like there's an organic kind of relationship between you and Facilities and probably telecommunications, like, but are you guys meeting on the regular basis when you have a summer like this? Like, is there a meeting being called that where, where, you know, progress has been measured and folks know?
Some of it's formal, some of it's informal meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Thank you. You said on the flat panels, you mentioned vendor. So you guys are not installing it, you have a vendor putting it in? Did that go out for bid? I mean, we haven't approved...
Yep, so we have a vendor installing them, it went out for bid. All purchasing goes through the business office and the city procurement office now. I work closely with Mike Morris now, that's a new thing for me.
Was that vendor on state combines, or was that?
Yes, on combined and state contract.
All right.
And we have entertained the idea with Facilities to do installations, because we do quite a few. It's been something I've discussed with the business office for several years, and there seems to be a bit of interest to do that. It would require probably hiring a full-time installer, to be honest with you, the amount of stalls we do throughout the year, every year. But I would be more than happy to entertain another conversation about it.
What was the cost for the, to install these panels?
I want to say it's $400 a room.
$400 a room?
I believe. I'd have to double-check, but I believe it's somewhere around there.
Okay. And how many staff members do you have within your department?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four? So I'm assuming there's one staff member per school?
No, because I took over the Data Services Department, so, and they're, they do all the data systems, so Infinite Campus and everything. So in terms of technicians per school, I believe we're around seven right now. You'll have to pardon my fogginess, I think we're down four technicians in the last two years. But it's somewhere for field techs, so we have our field techs, and then we have our network team, and we have our help desk team, and then we have senior techs who help manage the field techs. So the, all the layers you'd see in a traditional, like, honestly, like Fortune 500 company, is you're going to see in this department. So that's, that's how that, that number accumulates to that. But I don't have 24 field techs.
Okay.
And then there's an instructional tech department, too, just to make sure we're all on the same page with everything. So there's an instructional tech department with an instructional tech director, and that team is dedicated to just instructional technology and helping the teachers integrate technology into the classroom. And there's four of them. Three of them now, actually.
Okay. Kind of off-topic. You're in charge of BPS-wide emails, correct?
Yes.
When it comes to emails, specifically this body here, who has access to that? Is that, is that just you, or is, who are the, who are the individuals?
Me and my senior network admin, who also is in charge of all the FOI requests and works with Boo Lim, who's a custodian of record. It'd just be Rick and I that have access to that.
So just you two?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Sullivan, then Ms. Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Vancen. I'm looking at this slide here, and Goddard's going to be 100% at the end of the week. I'm not sure you're involved, but the elevator installation is, I'm sure that's not going to be done by the end of the week.
I wouldn't know about the elevator.
That would be Dr. Cobb's. Dr. Cobb, do you mind stepping in and giving an update on that? But before, Mr. Vigent, don't go too far. Oh, actually, we can address it afterwards. Let's finish with IT, then we'll go to that matter. Mr. Sullivan?
No, the reason I ask is, the elevator was computerized inside?
It would probably be computerized by the elevator company themselves. It's probably proprietary to elevator systems. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be supporting that.
Okay, so, I mean, it's not 100% then, because that elevator's still not done?
That, that would fall under Dr. Cobb's, Mr. Sullivan. I'll have him address that after Ms. Oliver answers, asks a question. If we don't have any other questions for IT, Ms. Oliver?
Just want to piggyback on the flat panels. So those are the numbers of flat panels that are being...
Installed.
Installed, right?
Yes.
So I just made, I did my math. So if we're doing 400 per flat panels, that's about $20,000 or so, that we basically didn't come before us, nobody knew about it, this is the first way hearing about it. I'm just like shocked and not surprised, but I will, I think something like this, especially if you're going to spend $20,000 or more, we should be, we should be told. This is a lot of money, and it's something that I don't understand why workers within our school district cannot install it. We have to basically get a vendor, outside vendors, and pay them over $20,000 to install flat panels.
Can I jump in for a quick second? So were those panels part of the move approval? We just approved the move, but we didn't approve, oh, sorry, we didn't approve the panels. I do not recollect, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but when were those panels added? Is it something, you guys have all these panels that were purchased?
No. So, well, first, I'll step back and just say, every procurement above $10,000 goes to the business office and the superintendent's office for approval and signature. So I don't know where it goes after that, to answer your question directed at me. In terms of, did you say if we just have these panels?
Well, I mean, we, I know that they went to the state, you got the bid through the state, but who approved it? So where, did we have these panels? Because I know sometimes we bulk purchase...
Equipment would have been approved by Dr. Cobb as the superintendent at the time.
But it didn't come before us for approval. So we'll, we'll address that separately. So, Ms. Oliver, again?
So the 20 grand was for installing the panels. How much were per panels that we paid for?
I'd have to look, but...
Because it's about 50 or maybe more, because that basically adds up to 50, and probably guys installing more, there was installed more. Can we have, like, basically invoice of how much we paid for these panels, please? I'm requesting that.
Mr. Vigent, just ballpark, I'm not going to hold you to it. What do panels usually go for?
I would say $2,500 to $3,000 a panel.
So let's just say 3,000, we'll go on the higher side, and we had 50 of those, and that's what we purchased, and then on top of that, there was another 20,000 that wasn't approved. So we'll, we'll address that under...
Okay.
Mr. Vega had a question?
Really more of a statement. I paid a lot more for installations for a lot less. So I, I don't know, it shouldn't be common knowledge for folks, but I'll just say $20,000 for that number of boards is actually a very good price. I'll also say that, you know, like, I, I'm not rushing to, I just know that I have the context for this. $20,000 is a great price for installations, and it is not typical. I've never used in-house for it, mostly because there are certain, the installation isn't simply about putting it up, it's also about knowing the technology well enough to have it run. So, not, you know, not disagree with the question, I think they're great questions. And there's nothing in this board project that seems weird or out of line. It catches us up to what most schools already have. So, yeah, I just wanted to put that context out there.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. I think just some of the members, me included, were just, ballpark, 2,500 apiece, and then the installation, it's great, but a dollar amount this size should have come before the committee, or at least the committee should have been made aware of it, especially, you know, we just, what we just went through with, in 2020, 2024. But any other, oh, Mr. Vice Chair, and then Superintendent, Vice Chair?
I mean, technology is technology, we have to be up to the times and whatever that cost is, and if we can afford it, we can do it. But I think, this is nothing with you, but I think, you know, what we're going through and still going through is that any purchases that this district is making, that this committee needs to be aware of. You know, I dealt with it, Mr. Sullivan and, Mrs. Sullivan and former colleague Ellis, where things were purchased prior to us even approving it. And that's not the way to conduct business, you know, so just moving forward when purchases like these need to be made, that the committee is aware of it. I understand that the state combine, I know very well how that process works, and it saves us a tremendous amount of money, but just so that we know what's really being installed.
So just for clarification, again, I've been here for 20 years, the way it's been in the past, and I've never seen a directive elsewise, is all of my quotes and invoices and purchase orders and everything go to the business office and the superintendent, depending on the cost. And then there's a Subcommittee...
Bid review.
Bid review, that I can get called to and explain all that. That's how it's been explained to me 20 years ago, and it's been here until today, I guess. Just, just for clarification, but I'm more than happy to send it to whoever I'm directed to send it to.
No, it's, it's just an ongoing, making sure, you know, the checks and balances are there, just to make sure. That's it.
Thank you. Superintendent Tahiliani?
Yes, and I do just want to, because this particular Subcommittee meeting was about Facilities Usage and Planning, so we came prepared to talk about the movement, the, you know, the, how, how much progress we've made towards, like, opening school. And what I feel like I'm hearing is definitely a discussion about the budget, and so we should certainly, you know, I think this would be more appropriate to be bringing up. And we can, feel free to send all of these questions now that we've heard them. We will certainly take note, get all of these questions answered from Trish Boyer. But just in my own understanding, too, is that a lot of these things, if they were previously in your budget, it, it is an approved expense, right? So there's a couple different things happening. There is the procurement process, but there's also the budgeting process. And to, you know, so when you approve the budget and you approve this amount in technology, this amount, and those are the kinds of things that then go here. So I know we're talking, too, about approving warrants, and that's going to be a process that we do, and that's another way to kind of, checks and balance to make sure that you're seeing the invoices. But I do just want to, like, bring up the fact that these were, and the ones that are coming to me, are all pre-approved budget expenses. And then if we're going on the state contract, you don't necessarily need to, you know, go through the same process. And so a lot of these things, and maybe we could talk further about what you all want the process to look like, it won't always come before you, because it was pre-approved, because we're going off state contract. And so, you know, we can talk about if there are certain things that you want to come before you, even though they wouldn't normally, even though they've been approved in the budget. But I do, I do just want to make that distinction, because I don't want it to be perceived like anything was done untoward here. These were definitely budgeted expenses, these were definitely done on state contract. And if we are going to implement another process, which I'm totally, I'm certainly open to and in favor of, we just want to make sure that, yes, then we articulate it to our entire staff, because like, as being said, they know their part in the process, right? They don't know the greater universe of what should be happening. So if we are going to put forward a new process, which I'm completely amenable to, I do just want us to be mindful of daily operations of business and making sure that these things are moving fast enough, because let's say we had gone through a different process for this, we may not be opening schools with our interactive screens on Tuesday of next week. So I'm just trying to kind of like balance the, the different needs that we have here, and some of the processes we already have in place, to make sure that it may not always come exactly on your desk the way it looks here, but we are making sure that everything is, is pre-approved in the budget.
Thank you, Superintendent. Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Thank you, Superintendent. I think with the state combine, instead of, I mean, that's something that we can just put into our, into our addenda books, you know, just like we do approvals with HR hiring, it could just be procurement process, what was on the state combines. Thank you to Mr. Carl Walker for actually introducing that to the district. I just want to give him his flowers, that he's the one that actually introduced the state combines to the district, to making sure that the district does save money. But it's, it saves us from meeting and approving and going through there, because the state already approved it. So, and that's, I think, the number one goal is to go right onto that list. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other members with any comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Vigent. As far as the IT department, we're all set for now. Thank you. Did anyone have any other questions for Dr. Cobb? Mr. Sullivan?
Dr. Cobb, just the elevator with the Goddard, is that still in progress?
So, right now, the elevator situation is, no, it's not in progress right now, because it was, we've had the architect take a look at it, and we had them do an estimate, and the cost of it is about $400,000. So there was no budget money approved for it yet, so it would have to go out for an RFP for bid. So, and we don't, of course, we don't have a procurement person to do that. So, so no, it's not in progress. We went as far as we could, and then it had to go to the next step, for approval and RFP.
One other quick question. The, we had put out an RFP for the, I think it was the Promise School on Belmont Street. Has that been, what's going on there?
An RFP for what?
The school on Belmont Street.
To do what? Oh, the, oh, you mean the, the re-engagement center? That, that RFP has not been put out as far as I know.
What happens now? The, the re-engagement is still there?
Still there right now.
Okay, thank you.
I thought, I thought we were going to put the RFP out. Thank you, Superintendent. Sorry, it's just...
So, yes, we don't have a chief procurement, or we don't have a procurement officer on the school side, but we have been working with the city side procurement officer, and he's been really supportive and helping us. He did recommend both for the Bus Depot and for that particular property, instead of doing an RFP to go out to bid for a leasing space. So we have been working with them on drafting that. We finished the Bus Depot one, that's being finalized, and will be put out in the newspapers and on the City Hall site, and then we're working on that one as well.
Just for clar, did you say he doesn't want an RFP?
No, going out to bid instead. So there are different processes you follow for different things, and he recommended that because it's a lease of space to go out to bid. So that's what we're doing. what we're doing.
So, is it Tuesday or Wednesday, is the first day of school there?
Tuesday.
And they're gonna be in the Belmont Street school?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Oliver?
Two things. We moved Adult Learning Center to Goddard, with the understanding that supposedly one of the elected officials, Senator, I think Michelle DeBaut, was supposed to basically figure out money to get that elevator installed. So what are we doing about our adult seniors that are going there for classes? Are we changing all the classes' situations so they are on the first floor, because now they can't go to the second floor? So now we have to ask the director of that program to basically move everything around, because now we don't have a way for adult seniors, we have, you know, disability, or have to have a walker, basically cannot go to the second floor. We were under the understanding that they were moving there, and they will be able to function and go to class, there will be no disruption, there will be no difficulty, and now we're telling, sorry, you're gonna have to move all your classes around, and put everybody that's unable to go to the second floor on the first floor. We're asking so much, we already moved a whole program to another building, thinking it was gonna be done. We have roof issue, hopefully that's been fixed. We had a bathroom issue, I think Ken took care of it after we mentioned last meeting, he was on top of it, he took care of it. This is what I mean when we move things around, and we, we promised something, we're expecting it to go a certain way, and it goes completely left. And now we're telling people to adjust their life, adjust everything else, because we were irresponsible and made this move, and I would say, sorry, can't do it, never mind. We gotta be adults, so we gotta, if you're gonna do something, and you say it's gonna be done, do it. And don't have to it, and now we have to tell people to readjust their life, and, sorry, you gotta readjust your program, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, it's a lot of work. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Dr. Cobb's, how are we as far as the roof at the Goddard? The roof, any of the issues that were brought up, are they, have they been finalized?
Yes, except for, I just talked to Ken, one small leak that we, we found in, on the side of the building where the ramp is, it's on the rubber membrane roof, so we'll get a price to repair that. At some point, we need to look like, like we did for the, the Huntington Building, we need to look at replacing the roof completely.
So as far as...
We called the price of the Huntington Building with about $1.7 million to, to replace the roof, so. So it's all repaired, except one, we'll be taking care of, one small area on the roof.
And I know they mentioned they were gonna put in air, air machines, air filter machines, I think they were gonna do air quality tests. Have they done the air quality tests?
Yes, I, I've looked at the test reports, they're the same as the other buildings, there's nothing outstanding.
If we can get a copy of those test reports in our Friday packet?
Yep, I'll send it to you.
Thank you. And then actually, rather than call Mr. Vigent up, how, I know there was a little bit of movement over at Huntington, so how is IT? Mr. Vigent, do you have the space you need? I know there was movement, and you didn't get the whole space that you needed. We just wanna make sure that IT, everyone else is able to function, but we need to make sure you're gonna have the space that you need. So how, how is that working out, where are you guys, other than those rooms you were at? I know the other rooms ended up going to a different program.
Yep, so the, the original rooms that were designated during the initial walkthrough, there was a change, two of the rooms were removed from the walkthrough, and then about a week later, two rooms were given to me, just a floor above that. So we have space, we are a big department with a lot of stuff, we are in the process of making sure everything fits. We just had a meeting today, the operations meeting, where Ken Thompson, Dr. Cobb's and I, were talking about possibly needing a little bit more space in that building, because of some of the technology that we store. So I probably better answer this in a couple of months, once we get settled, as us settles a little bit, but right now, we're, we're fully functional, and we're, we're making the best of it. And, you know, there's still a little work being done, but we're, we're in there and, and we're getting situated.
Definitely. I know, I think it was the pain, you have stuff everywhere, I'd rather see IT all in one place, that saves you time than having to go everywhere, looking, you know, you need the space, you need the area, so it's, it's a little stepping stone right now, we'll figure it out, we just had to get our students, our building situated, and our students back, and our staff back, but...
I appreciate the consideration.
Yeah, we definitely need to make sure, I mean, that, the whole purpose was to have you all in one area, and I know when I was at the pain, there was a lot of stuff for IT, and I'm going, you really should have all, same with some of the buildings that we have, you're, you're using storage, you really need one location. It just makes it much more easier to keep track of everything, and it just, it's a time saver. Vice Chair Rodriguez, and then?
I don't know if Mr. Vigent or Mr. Cobb's can answer this, you know, the safety director just came on board, but the pain is gonna be a high school now. Do we have, or is there enough cameras in there? Do we have cameras, have we addressed the cameras in the pain school?
I'll defer to Dr. Cobb's. Cameras at the, cameras at the pain school?
If you can just come up to the microphone, please?
So, we need to add more cameras to the pain school, the Goddard building, but the priority will be the, the pain school for the champion school there, so we, we need, we'll add more cameras, and also fate detectors like we do when they were over at Summer Street.
And the, the Huntington as well?
Yes.
That's just still work in progress?
Yep, that's correct.
Alright, thank you.
Actually, Dr. Cobb's, have the students all received new IDs? Since it's, it's the same program?
I don't have anything to do with the student IDs, that's, 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 at each school, doing IDs.
Okay, as long as they have them to work over there. Okay, thank you. Any, Mr. Vega?
So, so with all the moves that we did this, this summer, like, I don't know, questions for Dr. Tealiani, Dr. Cobb's? What is project management for a, a summer as complex as this summer was, look like? How often are meetings happening? You know, we heard from Mr. Vigent, we had Mr. Thompson here the other day, I've had the opportunity to talk to Joe Campbell more than once now, like, what does it look like? How do you coordinate all of these resources in something as complex as a summer?
Superintendent, yeah, sure. Oh, actually, who can answer that? Maybe Dr. Cobb's, I mean, you are deputy of operations, so please...
Correct, I am.
Thank you.
We, we meet regularly during the summer, I do walkthroughs all the time, I coordinate by email, my phone with Dan, IT, or with Joe for cameras and security, with Ken Legreis for radio systems. So we meet regularly, we have IT, I have a operation group, as Dan mentioned this morning, we have the, the large group, which is all of the operations of the district, with IT, with Tom Burke, with, with food services, with facilities, with radio, with safety and security, school police, we meet on a regular basis, so. And I meet with a smaller operations team, usually every, every couple of weeks, so...
How often would you say you've done a walkthrough of each of the buildings that, you know, were part of this summer?
Every week, every week.
Are you walking with the leaders of each building?
No, not necessarily. I don't, I don't, I don't bother the school when they're in session, you know, with this principal, I don't need to walk through with the principals, I walk through, mostly if I walk through the buildings, I meet with the senior custodians and go, whatever's going on in the building.
Okay. So, and along with that, so when we talk about, you know, the elevator got mentioned, the roof got mentioned, did you say 1.7 was the Huntington cost?
That's correct.
Okay, so I just wanna say this out loud, and I'm not gonna beat a dead horse here, this will be the last time you hear Jorge Vega talk about this. We made a decision, based on your information, that we were gonna move what is potentially our oldest population of students into a building where we knew the roof was not suitable, and replacement would cost $1.7 million, and that an elevator was not going to be available, and we had zero plan for bringing that elevator into place. I asked questions as a new member back in April and May, I'm not a new member anymore, and I've got to say, on behalf of the people who are calling me on the almost daily basis, this is appalling. All right? And, and, and I'll just say this out loud, I was told by our acting superintendent that this wasn't gonna be a problem. And it certainly has been. And I appreciate the fact that these are our adult learners, and we may feel that our mandate is to students, but our student, our mandate is to education, not to young education. So I, I'll just, this, I'm gonna let it go here, but I'm just gonna say that, like, I don't understand how we can go into another year without really closely examining how projects are managed, who does the research, who creates the communication loops for our operations.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. I actually, I agree with you 110%. We've had a lot of moves the past few years, and many of us haven't voted for them. This one, I felt we were left with no choice, and many of us didn't agree with it. But we were also led to believe that everything was gonna be fine come September, so, again, in a building that we closed years ago, so make it make sense. Maybe moving forward, we should get updates. I know our superintendent, Dr. Tealiani, takes time to send us a detailed breakdown of what's going on in our district, to keep us up to date as to what she's going, you know, schools, things like that. I think certain departments need to start giving us updates, so we know what is going on, just, just, and it's not really meeting. This is what happened, this, this is what we're dealing with, this is what we're working on. I think better communication, if anything that's happened, actually, it'll be a year and a couple of days, so if anything happened, I think we as a committee are asking for better communication moving forward, so I appreciate you voicing that, cause that's how many of us feel. Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Thank you. Goddard School is in Ward 4. I'm with Mr. Vega 150%. For the price of that elevator in the school district, expended that in other areas, which I would not mention at this time, that we could've paid for an elevator. I did talk to Mr. Ken Thompson to see what a roof replacement would cost, and I think that's gonna be a priority, to make sure that we do work on getting that roof fixed and getting the elevator there. And I will reach out to our state delegation to see if we can secure some state funds to make sure that we can get that, that corrected, and also the parking lot, the handicap ramp that's there as well, the railings are there, it's, it's not really secure, it's, it's a very old building, and making sure that it's in tip-top shape moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I know we had asked, Dr. Cobb's, we had asked if the MSBA, I know we had done some, the Huntington roof and a few other schools, Dr. Cobb's, are we gonna approach and see about the Goddard, as far as seeing if we can, I mean, the MSBA, it's, it's, it's a process, it's not just, we're gonna submit it, it's gonna get approved right away, it's, it's a little bit of time, so if you can take the microphone again?
Are you saying, have we, have we submitted anything to the MSBA for the Goddard?
Yes, cause I thought one of the meetings...
We have not.
Okay, I thought one of our meetings, we had asked for something, you know, look into the MSBA. Okay, it's September, in a few days, we, we gotta do better as far as...
I, I think they've suspended the rapid repair program that they had for boilers and roofs right now, so it's not, it's not available yet.
Sure, thank you. Any of the members, and actually, if we can just, Mayor Sullivan has joined us, if the record can reflect that. Any other questions or comments? Cause we are running a little, at 7:19, and we do have a 7:30 special school committee meeting. Nothing else? Okay, so the next item would be facility usage, I believe we went over that pretty much, we kinda just jumped around. And then, anybody have anything under other business? Other business, nothing under other business? Like I stated in the earlier meeting, we're gonna have a safety subcommittee meeting towards the end of September, and it might not be a bad idea to have just a quick facilities, just to see where we are, if everything's all set, and then probably just start looking at some of the other things that have to do with our facilities. If no one has anything, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So, motion's been made by Mr. Sullivan, probably seconded by Mrs. Sullivan, all in favor, show of hands? That is unanimous, meeting adjourned. Our special school committee meeting will be starting in about 10 minutes, thank you.